All right, are we, uh...
Love you know.
Are we live? Looking at, I think, Kevin and Nicole, are we live? All right, thank you so much. All right, everyone, today is September the 19th. This is a staff meeting, and I'd like to recognize that Chairman Meitzner is on travel. He's doing a mission to bring trains back to Wichita. So I don't know exactly his status. He may or may not be joining us, and if he's on, he's certainly welcome to interrupt and provide any comments he wants anytime. But he may not be with us right now, or he may tune in at some point, and he may have to go. So he may come and go as needed. So with that, Mr. Manager, I know we have at least one topic today.
Do.
What would you do today?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Good morning, Commission. Today, Steve Stonehouse is going to take the podium and give us a presentation on some quarterly numbers that he has to apprise the Commission on. It's setting up a vote, and I think, are we on for the...
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh meeting. And so, Steve, if you'd give us Chapter One and kind of preface what you're going to do here, and then go ahead with the presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners and Manager. I'm Steve Stonehouse with the Corrections Department. Annually, we turn in a comprehensive plan to the Kansas Department of Corrections, which is approved by our advisory boards and ratified by you as a Commission, setting out our priorities and budget associated with what it'll take to carry out those priorities. A new requirement this year, at the end of this fiscal year, which ended in July, is to report on our outcomes to the B O C C and let you know how we did and what we plan on doing for the next year. So that's the first time that we've ever done this, and we're just feeling our way through. It'll be on consent on the 27th, I do believe. As you know, Kansas Department of Corrections funds approximately $8.6 million of programs in the Department of Corrections, and they consist of Juvenile Intake and Assessment Center, Juvenile Field Services and Juvenile Services, and Adult Services. We have the Adult Residential Program and Adult Field Services. KDOC funds more programs than this, but these are the mandatory programs that we're required to report our outcomes on. We will be hearing from Mario Salinas, Deputy Director of Juvenile Services, on the outcomes for JIAC and Juvenile Field Services, and then Lori Gibbs will talk about the outcomes for Adult Residential and Adult Field Services. If you have any questions, feel free to ask as we go, and we'll get started with Mario. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mario Salinas, Deputy Director of Juvenile Programs. Today, I am here to present on the two juvenile programs, the first one being the Juvenile Intake and Assessment Center and their Immediate Intervention Program, and then the last one, Juvenile Field Services. So JIAC, or Juvenile Intake and Assessment Center, is a 24/7 program that provides intake, assessment, and release services to youth ages 10 through 17. These youths have been arrested or issued a notice to appear or agreement to appear. Operations, as I mentioned, are 24/7. They have a total of 10 employees. JIAC has a monthly average intake of about 130 intakes per month, which is the highest number of intakes of any judicial district in the state of Kansas. And the mission is to connect referred youth and families with appropriate services in order to limit their involvement with the juvenile justice system. So our first goal for JIAC is that 70% of youth with elevated risk, moderate to high risk, will accept a referral. To get to this goal, our first objective was to work with individual staff to increase our referrals, and the second objective was to identify additional referral agencies. For this goal, it was accomplished, and we had 78% year-to-date referrals accepted at JIAC compared to last year, which was 61%. We did have three new referral agencies, Prime Fit, Rise Up For Youth, and Hope Net. So those joined our referral agencies that we can offer to youth that do come through the JIAC process. Our second goal is to maintain successful completion of Immediate Intervention Program, or IIP, at 90%. Our first objective was to incorporate best practices into the IIP procedures, and then our second objective was to refine the referral process with the District Attorney's Office to increase IIP caseloads. So annually, we meet with District Attorney Mark Bennett to review our referral sources and identify any barriers that we may have. So we met with him this year and his team and updated our memorandum of agreement. This goal was accomplished. We had 97% of youth successfully completed the IIP program. The mission of IIP is to provide referred youth and families with immediate intervention in order to limit their involvement with the juvenile justice system. And for this program, it's voluntary 16-week program. We have one FTE to manage those youth as well. Our next program is Juvenile Field Services, or JFS. They supervise juvenile intensive probation youth. These youth are sentenced to a term on probation and have a set of conditions ordered by the court and reside in the community. The next population are those youth that are at the juvenile correctional facility, so intensive supervision officers monitor them and their progress while they're serving a sentence at the juvenile correctional facility. And then lastly, the population is conditional release. Those youth are serving an after-care sentence after serving their time at the JCF, and so they have conditions as well that they are required to complete. For the goals for Juvenile Field Services, the first goal was to use graduated responses and incentives to address behaviors. So if we have a technical violation of a youth, they address that through graduated responses. Some tools that they use are the EPICS tools, which is Effective Practices in Correctional Settings, as well as VLRs, Violation Level Reports. So for SFY 23, they issued 400 graduated responses to youth and 900 incentives. That's close to a two-to-one comparison. We'd like to get to a four-to-one, so we do have some room to improve on that area. But those violations were addressed with those evidence-based graduated responses. Our next goal was EBP hours, so evidence-based programming hours. Our goal was to increase the number of hours that were provided in SFY 23, and the last goal is to increase successful closures to 70% or above.
Mario, I have a question for you.
Yes.
So on this JFS, these programs that are being offered, again, this is not a... I guess these young people have an option of rejecting the offer to do a program to them, but they can say no and have, I assume, alternate detention or whatever in place of a program. Is that correct?
The course would require them to complete the intensive supervised probation. The only opt-in program would be Immediate Intervention Program, would be the volunteer program. So if they're ordered either standard probation or intensive probation, that's what they're required to do. They can't just go into a court setting and say, "No, I'd prefer to do 30 days of detention." They are required to complete the probation term.
So, okay, so, I see, intensive supervised probation.
Supervised probation, correct.
How many of the young people opt for that versus one of these other options here?
So the Immediate Intervention Program, those cases are typically those cases that go through the District Attorney's Office that are lack of prosecution.
Right.
So they don't have quite enough information to charge them with, and so that's why that program is a volunteer program at six weeks. We do have quite a bit of referrals for that, but there are some eligibility requirements. They can't have a prior juvenile offense. It can't be a sex crime. It can't be an offense that occurred more than eight weeks prior, and it can't be a sex offense. So those would be ineligible requirements for those youth that would be referred to the IIP program.
All right, thank you for that. Please continue.
So for the graduated responses and incentives, as I mentioned, we had 400 graduate responses and 900 incentives. For evidence-based programming hours, for SFY 23, 12,400 evidence-based program hours were completed by youth as compared to last year, where they had just over 10,000 evidence-based programming hours, so a significant increase in that. And just to put it into comparison, if you're a high-risk youth and required to complete evidence-based programming hours, they are required to complete at least 120 hours. For moderate youth, they're required to complete 60 hours. And so in SFY 23, we had 92 out of 117 successful closures complete all of their hours. So that's close to 80% of youth completed all evidence-based programming hours. I know a lot of you are familiar with our Evening Reporting Center. Just to note, we also partner with Butler County, Cali County, Harvey, McPherson, and hopefully soon we'll partner with Barton County as well to provide more evidence-based programming hours across the state. The last outcome is the SFY 23 successful closures. For intensive probation, we had 59% successful closures. That's 83 out of 140 youths completed that successfully. For CR and the Juvenile Correctional Facility, we had a 62% successful completion, so 37 total, and 23 were successful with a 12% recidivism rate. All clients combined, we had a successful completion of 60%, so 106 out of 177 with a total recidivism rate of 6%. So what that's telling us, that if these youth do come through our programs and complete successfully, they're at a significantly lower risk of committing future crimes. So while we could, you know, have more of a successful completion if we were more lenient on that, but that would ultimately raise our recidivism rate, which we want to... The clients want to release from our programming, complete those hours, to be successful citizens out in the community. So that's a positive.
The recidivism rate, do you guys track after they become adults?
Right now, we track 12 in 18 months and 24 months recidivism rates, so.
Regardless of if they're still juvenile?
Correct, yeah. Next steps, moving forward for SFY 24. Our plan is to increase our successful closure rates. To do this, we have reached out to our KDOC regional contact. They have already been on-site since our SFY 23 year-end outcomes to work on some of those effective practices in correctional settings tools, as well as provide training and feedback regarding graduated responses and treating the case plan as a live, living document. Something new this year we have for the Department of Corrections is our Continuous Quality Improvement Team. This team was developed to implement best practices, provide outside quality assurance for our programs, so they have developed some trainings that will help us be more successful in our case closures. And then lastly, we have partnered with Justice Systems Partners on the implementation of coaching versus referee mentality, and the Justice Systems Partners are providing onsite training as well as support over a five-year term. So we hope that that pilot program will assist us in increasing our outcomes. That being said, that's all I have for juvenile. Is there any questions before I pass it on to Lori?
Yeah, thank you. Mario, thanks for the presentation. A related question on juvenile. What is the Juvenile Crisis Center? And what is it... How's it different than what we do here today?
So the Juvenile Crisis Center came up in the House Bill 2021 as far as having a location where youth that have a mental or behavioral or substance abuse issue or are in crisis, that they would be able to go to a facility where they would receive services instead of having that law enforcement contact, or instead of coming to juvenile intake and assessment or detention facility.
So those juveniles in our community today that have those situations, what's the plan now? What happens with these individuals now? Are they coming to JIAC now? Are they going to Comic Care Children's? Like, what is the plan now for those experiencing mental health, substance use?
I think right now would be probably what you said, speculation as far as whether they go to Comic Care Crisis or if they come to JIAC. One of the incentives we have with the task force is to implement individual justice plans, and so hopefully in those types of situations, if we can identify youth with a mental health or diagnosis, that we would have an IJP in place where they wouldn't come to JIAC or JDF, that they would receive the services out in the community.
What is Kansas City... What's Johnson County doing? They have a crisis. Are they the only crisis intervention... Do you have a Crisis Intervention Center in the state of Kansas, do we know?
Commissioner, if I may, they do not have a Juvenile Crisis Intervention Center in Johnson County. There are none in the state right now.
There are none in the state right now?
State.
Well, that's a problem.
Crisis... Our Community Crisis Center probably sees the bulk of the children that you just asked about. Depending on the severity of their involvement, they probably are going to go to crisis first unless it's a severe situation, and they'll go to JIAC. But there are no... Those that were referenced in that Senate bill, they don't exist right now.
They don't exist right now. We were having to send juveniles to Kansas City or Johnson County for some reasons here. What are the reasons we send children up to Johnson County? For what type of treatment?
I think you're referring to inpatient substance abuse treatment. It's one of the gaps identified with our Team Justice Subcommittee as far as currently, locally, we only have inpatient male bids for youth 16 to 17 years of age, and the inpatient drug substance abuse treatment provider that you're talking about is in Kansas City area, and it only serves males, so we don't have any female.
Nothing here. There's a gap, okay. Well, I appreciate that we've identified some of those gaps. I know that, you know, we approved a CIP for a new juvenile campus here. We're going to invest a lot of money into this over the next few years. I would encourage us to have a broader conversation to make sure, before we put our foot on the gas, to make sure that we've identified those gaps, and if there's anything we can do, any adjustments that need to be made to make sure we're shoring up those gaps. I would encourage us as a body and as staff to try to identify what those gaps are and see if we need to make a couple pivots with the dollars that we're willing to allocate towards this project. We know there's gaps that exist. We know there are potential solutions, and I just think that we should dig in a little bit deeper to see what those are, if there's a pivot that might need to be made. So, thanks, Mario.
Thank you.
Those are great questions, and I think Johnson County is ahead of us on this one a little bit because they do have a property tax-funded, I think, program, and I just looked online. I think it's an 11-bed facility for juveniles on substance abuse, you know, issues, and so I think they have something we ought to maybe take a look at and get a greater awareness of exactly what's working well for them in this area and see if there's anything we can use here in Sedgwick County. Any other questions for Mario? We do have Chairman Meitzner on the phone. Chairman, do you have any questions for Mario?
No, thank you, Mario, for the information, and thanks for letting me dial in and listen.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman, and we're going to go on to Lori now. Thank you, Lori.
Good morning. Lori Gibbs, Deputy Director of Adult Programs. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today to share our KDOC year-end report. By statute, community corrections agencies are assigned the highest-risk offenders in our corrections continuum. We are a cost-effective, community-based alternative to prison. Our focus is on public safety and reducing admissions to prison facilities. By providing access to services such as substance abuse and mental health treatment, cognitive behavior groups, employment assistance, batter's intervention, and sex offender treatment, offenders receive the services and treatment they need to live productively in our communities. In Sedgwick County, over 2,500 clients are served annually in community corrections, with an average daily population across all programs of approximately 1,600 clients. We are the largest community corrections program in the state, with the second-largest, Johnson County being half our size. Community corrections agencies across the state have a statutory requirement to achieve a successful completion rate of 75% or higher, or to demonstrate a 3% improvement from the previous year. Although we have had multiple years of demonstrating improvement, Sedgwick County has not met the statutory requirement of demonstrating a 75% successful completion rate since that requirement was established. I'll review that in greater detail in a few minutes here. The first objective that we have in furtherance of meeting that 75% successful completion rate goal focuses on ensuring that officers are effectively utilizing graduated sanctions and that we are considering public safety when responding to violations. We support this in a variety of ways. Adult Residential and Drug Court are amongst our most valuable graduated responses. They provide a high level of intervention through evidence-based programming, increased structure and accountability, and support. We utilize a response form that's maintained in all client supervision files. It serves as a case history so that as ISOs are staffing violations with their supervisors, they can discuss the history of the case, what has been administered in terms of a sanction and a response in the past, and understand the case history in terms of the offender's criminal history. We also have developed a response table, which is a grid of common violations that provides the ISO with a menu of graduated responses that they can utilize when addressing violations. The expectation is that officers use the response table to determine an appropriate response based on the violation at hand. We also utilize a model, a case review model, and this is required when ISOs are considering a warrant for a technical violation. Case review process involves the ISOs having a discussion with a team of ISOs to come to a decision on how to best address violations. Case reviews ensure a balanced and thoughtful approach to addressing violations. It's important to keep in mind that community corrections is only one part of the equation when it comes to decision-making about probation outcomes. Although we present alternatives for judges on a regular basis in terms of how we might address a probation violation, the judge is the ultimate decision-maker. This slide captures what our year-end results have been the past previous years. In state fiscal year '23, our success rate was 52%. In '22, it was 58%. In '21, it was 63%, and '20, it was 56%. I previously mentioned that we've never met the statutory requirement of 75%. The closest we've come to meeting that expectation ever, in my recollection, was the 63% that you see represented here for state fiscal year '21. It's important to note that this occurred during COVID protocols, when in-person supervision was dramatically reduced, and we were collecting far fewer drug screens than what is considered typical for our agency. The agency average over the course of the past 10 years is 54% successful completion. The second objective centers around providing training and coaching on the use of EPICS tools and risk assessments. Through the use of risk assessment tools, officers are expected to address factors contributing to criminogenic behavior. Ongoing training in this area ensures that officers are establishing supervision strategies based on evidence-based tools, and Mario mentioned some of those. EPICS tools are a set of supervision techniques used by probation officers to help build relationships, increase motivation to change, provide intentional intervention aimed at changing behavior, and identifying and addressing skill deficit. This objective is about continuous quality improvement, and again, Mario mentioned our CQI team. It's comprised of a QA supervisor and our ISO3s, who are tasked with coaching staff performance related to evidence-based practices. They review audio recordings of office contacts to evaluate effective use of supervision tools, assessment of risks and needs, and formulation of case plans that serves as a roadmap for supervision. I know you are all aware that staff turnover has presented significant challenges for our agency in the past several years. The onboarding process is lengthy when we hire new staff. It takes around six to nine months for new staff to complete the battery of training that is required by KDOC, and during this time, tenured officers are tasked with supervising higher caseloads since new staff aren't certified to complete assessments. As a result, high-quality evidence-based supervision strategies become more challenging. With most positions now full, we are looking forward to being able to move back to a supervision model where the focus is quality over quantity. We appreciate the county supporting the pay increases for our staff in an effort to recruit and retain staff doing this difficult work. Next steps for us are similar to what Mario mentioned in his next steps. This quality improvement team will assist us in ensuring that staff remain trained in the strategies that are considered evidence-based and effective in the work that we do. Mario also mentioned the Organizational Coaching Model Project with National Institute of Justice. I will share, just adding to what Mario said, is that Sedgwick County was kind of handpicked amongst two other communities across the country to participate in this program, so we feel very privileged that we will be working with Dr. Lovins and his research team over the course of the next five years on this coaching versus referee model. And then lastly, we consider the development of our supervisory tier to be extremely important in supporting the work that we do. So we are taking full advantage of the skill development offered for supervisory staff from HR supervisory training, as well as the use of Kansas Leadership Center. And I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Hey, Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for Lori? Commissioner Meitzner, do you have any comments or questions for Lori?
No, thanks for the presentation.
I have a couple of quick questions. The success rate numbers are a little bit disturbing, and again, I'm not trying to be negative here. I'm just trying to understand. How do you measure success?
So success is when somebody completes all the requirements of their probation and completes the full term of their probation.
And does every county have this analysis?
They do, yes.
How do we compare to other large counties in the state?
We... There are several jurisdictions, like Johnson County and Yandotte Unified Government, who are more similar in terms of our success rates than some of the smaller jurisdictions. We... I understand the numbers can look a little scary. I think what we strive to do in community corrections is ensure that we are making correctionally based decisions always in the work that we do. And we deal with an extremely high-risk felony population, and so while our goal is always to promote offender change that ultimately results in a successful completion, there are times when the decisions that we have to make related to public safety mean that we have to recommend that somebody be revoked and do their time. We've spent a lot of time as a leadership team within adult programs evaluating cases where we've recommended revocation, which means that's the opposite of a successful completion. And we stand firmly behind the decisions that we make, given the population that we work with and the violations that they commit, which are very often new offenses in our community. So we work very hard to improve our success rate, but we will always make correctionally sound decisions in the work that we do.
So the agency goal of 75% or higher or 3% improvement, is that a Department of Corrections agency goal, or is that Sedgwick County agency goal?
That's adult programs' goal. So that's a statutory requirement for adult community corrections agencies.
And if they have technical violations or there's graduated sanctions, does that mean that they have failed, or simply just sets them back a little bit, and they're still potentially going to be successful?
Yes, they can have multiple probation violations, go before the judge to be sanctioned for those violations, be reinstated on probation, and ultimately complete successfully.
All right, so it's great information. I don't see any things that says we need to... Some kind of change is being advocated for. This is simply just to update us so we know what's going on, but there's no asks today. no asks today, there's no challenges we need to be aware of. Everything seems like it's going as, going as planned, so to speak.
That's correct.
All right, well, thank you for that. Any other comments or questions from Commissioners or anybody actually, if that matters? Thank you.
I would just add that Lori and her staff have looked at the number of people who are presumptive probation, excuse me, presumptive prison, who are then put on, who are sentenced to probation instead of going to prison, and we have the highest rate in Kansas. So those folks oftentimes will come with a warning from the judge that if you don't make this probation go, you're going to prison. So we, Sedgwick County is different than other parts of Kansas, and we know that. So when the courts entrust somebody to ISP and, and they're not given a whole lot of leeway, we have no choice, and we feel like it's the best decision to revoke those folks. So we let that drive our decisions and not the success rate. So that's, we want to do as best as we can, but we know sometimes some people are going to prison, and that's what's going to happen.
At any given time, the clients assigned to us from the court, 40% of them are presumptive prison, which means, according to sentencing guidelines and the, and the current offense and their criminal history, that they should have gone to prison.
And that's a higher percentage for Sedgwick County versus other counties?
Yes.
And again, if they, if they, if they actually did go to prison, it would be a state institution, it would not be?
Correct.
Okay. I'm surprised that it's, that we have such a difference between county, from county to county. Do we know why that happens?
Not specifically. I think in Sedgwick County, we deal with a far higher number of judges than other jurisdictions do, and all of those judges have their own philosophies about probation, and so that's, I mean, that's definitely one factor. The sheer number of clients that we supervise here in Sedgwick County compared to other jurisdictions, I mentioned Johnson County supervises more than half of the clients than what we supervise here in Sedgwick County. So that means higher caseloads here in Sedgwick County than in other jurisdictions a lot of times.
Well, thank you again for the presentation. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize what's going to happen Friday at 11. Can we talk about that?
Absolutely, sure. Veterans Treatment Court is sponsoring, hosting an open house from 11 to 1 at, at the courthouse, and we would be happy if everybody could, could make it to support this new program in Department of Corrections.
And I think there's actually, if I did this right, there's actually two things going. There's also a drug court graduation. Am I right about that, or is not?
No.
I have my, it has air on my calendar then.
Yes.
So again, we're going to celebrate the Veterans Court. That's, that I think is a, is a great step in the right direction.
Absolutely.
Thank you for all your involvement in getting that going. I sure appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, any, anything final? Manager, anything you want to bring up here?
That's all we had, sir. Steve, anything else to close up?
Well, thank you again, Lori and Mario and Stephen, for your presentation. I don't know if Chairman wants to say anything or not, but Chairman, we are about the end of our meeting here. If you want to tell us what you're doing, that's up to you.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Hall. And thanks for this, this meeting this morning that you guys are hosting, or that we hosted in Ran. And just, just to make sure that you all know and anybody else, I'm at the Midwest Inner City Passenger Rail Conference. It's a, the state of Kansas belongs to a compact of 10 states that share all of their passenger rail status and opportunity, and FRA, Federal Rail Administration is here presenting what their requirements are on various funding and grant opportunities, of which Kansas has, has joined with Oklahoma and Texas to be the lead on a, on this latest round of grant applications. This, this again is connecting the Oklahoma City to, through Wichita and Newton effort. And it's important, Kansas KDOT belongs to this compact at a fee, not, not much, every year, and that includes the expense of about three of us are representing Kansas at this, at this conference. They're appointed by the state legislatures, the Senate, the House, and the governor. And so I'm one of the appointees, have been for a number of years, even when I was at the city. So, and so that, that trip is included in the fees that the state pays, so it's not, it's not an expense for the county, at least. So with that, I'm here yesterday, we're meeting all day today, and most of tomorrow coming back Wednesday evening. So I don't know if Congress Department will have any media requests about this, because it sometimes is a hot topic, but I'll be available. I just wanted to, again, share with you all and let everybody know why I'm, I'm not present today at this meeting.
Well, Chairman, thank you for that update. And again, we're not going to have a meeting tomorrow, but perhaps next Wednesday, a week from now. Maybe you can give us kind of a takeaway from your trip this week and let us all kind of know where we're at. But I want to say thank you for being, being so focused on this topic. You have, I think, led this community for a number of years, and I recognize you as a, as a subject matter expert for this community in regards to passenger rail coming back through Wichita. So thank you for all you do there, Chairman.
Well, thanks to you. I know more about it than I ever thought I would. I wish that, I'm hoping this chapter is just, we can close it real quick in, in the, in the near future, because it's been kind of a, a long journey, longer than I expected, that's for sure. Anyway, thanks for you all supporting me on this, too.
Well, Chairman, thank you for that. We're wrapping up this meeting. I just want to, again, recognize that we're not going to have a meeting tomorrow, no BOCC meeting tomorrow. We do have an agenda review on Friday, a little earlier than usual, 8:30 a.m. And is there anything else we need to announce before we adjourn this meeting? All right, any Commissioners have anything you want to raise? All right, well, seeing none, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.